So I'm going to call the meeting order at 6:02 and ask if there are any amendments to the agenda.
Thank you for putting the agenda together. It's a really nice job.
Well, thank you.
And Deena working together.
We did it over email and things like that.
Yeah, thank you.
That happened a long time ago.
It does. So, here in none, we'll start with the meeting organization. Since we had the MVU meeting, I was able to speak directly with the Secretary of State's office about the fact that we didn't have board elections and we had been told by one of the town clerks that because we didn't have elections, our seats were not in fact vacant. So I wanted to confirm that directly with the Office of Elections and I did that. So there is no vacancy to fill. You are still in your seat until we either hold an election for Swanton Board seats in the local budget or the Board ceases to exist. Okay? I could've put that better. Success.
Until we sunset.
Until we sunset. So, we do not need to have an appointment for a vacancy. And I did ask, the fact that MVU wasn't sure and we didn't vote things, he said, "That's on the governor basis." So I guess I'll start with nominations for the Board Chair.
I'll nominate Terry as Board Chair.
Any nominations?
I will second that.
Are you sure?
Because, okay, because it is a short-term thing, right? We're talking just...
In theory.
...for years. It's life.
No, it's a life commitment.
All right. Well, the reason I say that is because I was hoping that the following year Megan would be president. She was vice president, then she was going to be president.
President and Chair.
Chair.
Oh, Chair, sorry. I'm ready for president. We're going for...
Well, if we ever have president, we'll support you there.
We're going big, so...
So, hearing no other nominations, all in favor of Terry as Board Chair? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for the honor.
Congratulations. So now it's your meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, thank you for taking care of all that. So according to the agenda, you already did all this, right? Do we need to do more?
And next is Vice Chair.
Okay, Vice Chair.
I'll make Megan.
I'd like to second that. And any discussion?
Now that you know, you have to be Chair.
Do you care to discuss any later?
Nope, that's fine.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, nomination for clerk.
John Krummen.
John Krummen, he's a good job at it, right? He does a good job.
Right, sure.
Let's nominate John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? John, you are clerk.
Who seconded it?
What's that? Oh, I'm sorry.
I seconded. Okay, thank you.
And then SU Board nominations.
Who's on it now?
I think us three, right?
John.
I'm not on it.
Oh, you're not on it. You're with MVU on it.
That's right. John, you went on.
I think the same slate.
Okay, let's do, I think you're right.
Something's happening in the next few months that you just, I mean, I bet on it, but I just think, three people have been there going there the last few months, so I nominate John, Megan, and Terry to be our SU Board Representatives, such times as is resolved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, great, thank you.
Now, I've put this for all of our organizational meetings, but you don't have a set date and time for your board meetings, so we can just...
Right, it's every six weeks, right?
Right. We had a schedule that Toby worked out.
Yeah.
Maybe we could ask Toby and Deena to work on that again.
So, we can just ignore that piece. The reason why I do that is if you actually have, you know, second Tuesday of the month kind of meeting and for some reason something happens and it's not warned, it's still a legal meeting because it's been established.
Right, it's been established.
An organizational meeting, so...
Well, fortunately, we don't have that.
That is okay.
Okay.
We'll make sure that we take care of the right schedule.
Can we go back just a minute? You asked about the agenda. Do we have an executive session tonight?
Let's see if I put it in there, but I do have...
I have an item that I really think needs to be discussed.
And I would like to give a brief overview of what we're doing regarding contracts and that I think would make sense to do in an executive session.
Okay, and we can do that at the end so we don't hold everybody up?
Makes sense.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you for reminding me.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So, correspondence items for future agendas and public comments. Did anyone have anything that anyone asked them to bring up from the public? No, so we're okay. Okay, let's talk about the board minutes. Thank you for getting those out and Tamara for making those edits. Would you have a nomination to accept those?
I'll make that motion.
And Megan made it. Dawn, want to second it?
I will. I want to read them again.
Oh, okay.
It seemed like there was something, yeah, I'll make the motion so we can then discuss them.
Okay, sounds good. So you second it?
I'm bringing pirouettes back up here.
It was long, there were a lot there. There was a lot going on.
I have too much courseware for pirouettes. I'll get the MVU's to be more cohesive, all right?
Oh, right, you've got...
I just thought there was some there.
We had revised ones.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't print out the revised ones.
She made some edits on it. Could I make one suggestion?
Please.
I just noticed Justina's title is really assistive principal. I don't know if that makes that big of a difference, but it's just in all our correspondence and you have vice and just in the present, people who are present. It's just a very little thing.
But it's good to hear.
Yes, I don't think we have anyone called vice principals anymore.
They have vice presidents and vice chairs.
Vice pres- presidents. Okay.
I just...
Go ahead, that's good.
I didn't have a stupid one. Oh, you're right. I always forget. I think we'll be okay.
Yeah, I think it's good, too. Do it twice next time.
It's my computer.
Uh-uh.
Because it says Jason and Chrissy, but mine shows a J-A-S-O-R, but it well could be my computer.
What?
Jason's name way down near the bottom. Jason and Chrissy have worked on getting it.
Oh, it is an R.
Okay, just where are we? Typo.
It is...
See, mine looks like an R.
On mine, it's spelled right.
Yeah, mine, too. Sorry.
One of those things she corrected, maybe.
It's okay. What probably happened is something a bit different. You know, the tail's off the iron.
Are you on the revised one, too, Dawn?
Oh, maybe that's where it is.
Well, I'm on the ones that she sent us the other day.
There was one today, I think.
Yes, it is a revised one from that. Maybe that was...
It's okay.
It actually looks as if...
Jason is in other places still, right?
In a couple places, it looks as if in making the FOIS copy or something, there's just a little, almost like whiteout, not that it was, but...
Excuse me.
I'm just looking to see if there's anything else.
I have a copy, please. It's here. I would just like to say thank you for spelling my name right.
You're welcome.
You're the only person so far.
I guess whoever it was could be too important.
You can always let me know and I can edit it later if you...
It's all right. Wasn't that big a deal. There's some dates there, but the dates were all right at that time, it just weren't right.
Yeah, really good point.
Oh, the, for the...
Do we need to say anything about that?
No, I would think we're fine.
Okay. So, any further discussion?
Okay.
All in favor of approving the minutes? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Okay, motion passed. Minutes are approved, thank you. Okay, and then fiscal and HR report and warrants. Do we have the warrants for tonight?
Yes.
Toby not here?
John, that's true. John and Toby.
Yeah, John and Toby are not here.
Okay.
Dynamic duo.
We had two months to do, but we'll just table that. I did want to let you know that in the February warrants, there was an exception to a rule that you typically follow. I had made an exception and allowed Jason to pay the Vermont Department of Public Safety $67.20 and $50 without prior board approval. The reason I did that was because he had a fire inspection with the Fire Marshal Jeffrey Bryant on the morning of February 26th for the new copier situation and he was told that they needed a new permit or they were going to have to stop work basically until they got one and he was very concerned about that. So given the dollar amount and given the fact that the board had already approved that work, I felt comfortable doing that. I don't typically do that, but...
How much money are we talking?
About $110 total, two small invoices, but...
I'm just, I'm asking, don't we have any kind of procedure in place that you could talk to Deena for any amounts up to a certain amount? It'd be okay? He wouldn't have to call the board for $100, $200?
Typically, we don't pay a bill, though. So we can contract with someone, he wanted a check that day to go get permits.
So that's what it is.
So I would never typically issue a check without the board being aware.
Okay, so it's about issuing a check. Yes, I think, since you had approved the project, it would be okay.
So this was the copier?
Okay, thank you.
You know, that it moved, that it hit over, it was an additional permit that he wasn't aware of and it would have slowed everything down.
So it's about a check?
It's about a check, okay.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So we will table the warrants for January and February and we'll all bring those back next time.
You know, Terry raised a good point. We probably don't need to do anything and all the other things on our plate, but I think a lot of the stuff that I see happening here with finance in the district is so back to the old days, you know? I worked a million dollar budget where people could spend up to, let's say, $500 or something and just pay it and let the board know. You know, one time you did regularly, but in a situation you were authorized, people, a couple of people, you could do that. Here, we spend a lot of time at our other board meeting, we can't finance it. You know, I don't know if I'm smart enough to differentiate between, take them all being a supplier or not, whether...
Fortunately, the board does that. But, so I'm just, the warrants with us not being able to approve them, is that going to cause a problem for you?
You've approved the bills and the payments have been made. This is just sort of after the fact thing.
Okay.
Is there a rule that says that warrants have to be approved by the clerk in the finance committee?
There's a rule that the board has to review bills or not review bills, but give the okay to issue payment, which you've already done by reviewing the actual bills. It's a little bit redundant probably to then bring it to you and say, "Here's what was actually paid for the month of January," but I like to do it.
I'm just willing to get it off our plate, like the other people are, and approve the warrants. Again, I wouldn't do it every time, but, you know, going forward, we're going to be, well, I get it, six weeks maybe, maybe earlier. I would approve all the warrants and you can vote it up or down.
Okay, so do you make that motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, a second? Can I second, or do you want to second?
Yeah.
Megan's going to second it?
Okay.
Am I assigning it to me or...
Whoever might want to look at them, I didn't...
I don't mind just taking a quick look at them.
Okay, perfect.
And you sign them after we...
Yeah.
Is anybody signature here somewhere?
I'll give you a copy in a second.
Okay. So you'll take a quick look, you're going to second it.
Mm-hmm.
Any discussion on whether you all have an issue with anybody?
Do you need the amounts stated? I can give them to her after if you want. I don't need them on record.
I should hear $687,849.16.
Is that January?
Oh, you weren't thinking of to get that. And the second one is 633,314.72. Would you like them again?
I'm good. Thank you.
The month that it went by?
The first one was for the month of, ooh, January.
Perfect.
And the second one was for February, so we did take them in chronological order.
Thank you.
And I would like to make as part of the motion, rewrite the motion, the amounts and the date. So the first one would be January 687849, the other one would be February. I think that's cleaner.
Beautiful.
Okay? All right. And I'll look at these as we go along and everybody else scan and then we'll get them off our plate.
Okay, perfect. And we have a second and we've had discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, great, beautiful. Thank you.
I did bring a financial report. I'm not really going to discuss anything about it. There's nothing really to talk about. We're monitoring the expenses. Deena's doing what she needs to be doing, but there's nothing really that is noteworthy and any changes anyway.
Well, other than the thing that Deena wants to talk about later, but that's different. Okay.
I'm sorry, Terry.
Thank you.
Do you need... No, and I think Julie might want one for her records. I think she's not, don't you?
No, I don't. I'll watch the page.
So still projecting a significant amount for carryover and to under expend the budget. I do need to work with Becky over the next week or so to fine-tune the assessment numbers again because she's still working with those budgets, so that'll be what I'm working with. HRA numbers are the other thing that I'm watching. I'm hoping we don't have to ask the schools for any more money to fund HRAs, but there's still a few months left with employees using benefits, so we'll see. That's kind of what I'm doing with that. The MOU for the playground, this is actually an MOU for a playground grant application. It's through Walmart and there's like a four to five, four-page agreement that you need to sign before you engage and it does specifically talk about who has signatory authority, so this doesn't need to be signed, but I thought it was important to at least let you know that this is something you could consider and approve or deny. Debbie is looking to apply for a Walmart grant. Basically, I think if you're agreeable, we could authorize Debbie Winters, who's the head of the Playground Committee, to sign the grant application once it's completed. Basically, you have to be recognized as a government entity to engage or to apply. You have to directly administer the project or program that's being supported and no grant funds can be re-granted to any other organization. I'm hitting the highlights. You need to return any unused portions of the grant. You have to retain records, so there's record retention rules, which we do anyway.
Does it say how much it's for?
This does not, no. The grantee agrees to cooperate with, for publicity, so if they wanted to come and take a picture, we'd probably have to let them. There's general indemnification, anti-terrorism clause.
That's ensuring.
Anti-corrupt clause. We have to deposit the funds within 180 days or we no longer have them and it's, so I just didn't know.
So the question is, do we approve Debbie applying?
Debbie being able to apply and sign the grant application on your behalf.
And sign for grant application.
Chairperson?
Yes.
Let me make the motion, I'm going to make it. I'd like to make the motion to involve our Vice Chair of the Board, so it's a co thing. It's not the yes Debbie Winters or Mayan, but I think on something like that, we should have two people. And I think you've been very well with the Playground Committee.
Yes.
So, however you want to handle it, but with the motion, I want to make sure that we have two people.
That sounds good. Do you want to make that motion?
Okay, I'll move that the grant application shouldn't be signed, hopefully reviewed too, but signed by Megan and Debbie.
So I don't actually have it. I'll have to contact you.
Hopefully Megan's all right with that, but I just think it's a good precaution.
I agree. I think that's really smart and I'll second that motion. Any more further discussion? All in favor, say...
Now Debbie has been applying for other grants that don't require an agreement and that's still okay for her to be doing on her own?
You know, once you start getting into something like this, and you know, as a former administrator, I always had two people just, I guess, wasn't I didn't trust people, it's just that I thought, hey, a board member should always...
Exchanges are good things.
So I don't think we should need to change what we're doing unless it's a contract like that, then I think we definitely should.
Beautiful. Okay, so all in favor? Did we do this? Or, no, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay? Okay, motion carried unanimously. Beautiful, thank you. Does anyone have any questions over the finances?
If you substitute $100.
Off the top of my head, it bumped up last year, subs, what's the daily rate for subs right now?
Depends on whether it's 11...
For a teacher, I think you're assuming, right?
12.50 an hour?
Not for a teacher.
Oh, for not teachers, for $11 an hour, so it's $100.
$100.
For eight hours a day.
Unless they're a long-term sub, then they would be getting per diem.
They're on a contract, yeah. What if you saw some day-to-day's and I took that one's pretty good.
I have some follow-up, too, for you, for the POs. It's not really for the whole board, but...
Yeah.
Megan reviewed bills last time, so you had noticed that invoices amount being paid didn't necessarily meet, match the PO amount. There were back orders on these three.
Okay.
So that can happen and then we'll pay for the back order once it comes.
Okay.
This one, this one, they applied tax and we didn't realize it, so we have to get the tax back. And this other one, it's NCSS contracts, any contracted service that we know about, we do a PO for the whole year and then we pay against the PO.
Okay.
So we're only paying a portion.
Okay.
Just a warning to let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you for looking at them.
Beautiful. Any other comments on this before we move on?
Since you're here.
Yeah, sure.
Just below. Yeah, that's fine.
So we are at the Principals Report.
Yeah, and I, I'm just looking, I don't have a formal report and I'm going to accept full responsibility for that. I've gotten kind of off our routine because I thought we were done, just being Swanton and then I... So, a couple of things I would like to share, though, if I can, just kind of in the data area. This is, we had our kindergarten concert today, very successful, a very small crowd, but we attributed it to the fact that our K numbers are very small. But even that being said, kindergarten, and it was only one grade level, but kindergarten concerts usually are like grandma, grandpa, and some of those, but it went very well. Amy Reichert's doing a really, really nice job. Then in the area of music, excuse me, Gianna Messier had given me these figures a while ago after her January concert and we hadn't met yet, so... And these are just outstanding numbers and they're the largest that she's seen in her program in 11 years, so I just wanted to share with the board. She had a total of 99 Swanton students perform in the January 10th concert. 25 chorus members, 76 instrumentalists. Of those 76 instrumentalists, 29 are string students and 48 are band. There were three students who participated in both chorus and band and one Swanton homeschooled student was in the beginner band. As of January 16th, there are a total of 219 students enrolled in grades four, five, and six combined, which means that 48% were involved in the concert.
Wow, that's great.
So that's, if I say this right, that's almost half of all of the kids in grades four, five, and six, which I think is pretty outstanding.
Yeah.
So that's something I think that's just very, very exciting and something to be very proud of. So that, the concert, the other thing, Justina, once again, in her work with Debbie and Megan, they really, I think, as that whole team, as we're getting near the end of that fundraising, wanted to have the kids involved somehow. Staff has been great, a couple of things with staff, you know, we had the wear jeans on Tuesday day and jeans go a long way for incentive and even the principals wear in them on Tuesdays, so that's good. But right now, the kids are involved and I think through the committee, you had talked all year long about, you know, you're trying to hit this goal and we didn't, kids know what's kind of going on, but we didn't want to do a big la-la until it became a reality, which I think is very, very close to being so. So anyway, that being said, we've had coin drives. We just started. Our first week, our Swanton school staff and students raised $1,054.55 in coins.
Wow.
So it was like a huge, huge kickoff. It's making the kids feel like they too are contributing. And it's not the type of thing where like we're on the intercom every day talking it up, but kids know it and they're taking pride in the sense of bringing that in.
That's cute. That's really sweet.
Yeah, so those were, I think they're real big things. Things are just moving along right now. We'll get into field trip season soon, S-Back is coming soon.
Can I jump in for the playground real quick?
Yeah, of course.
Which, this reminded me, we had discussed sort of at the beginning, the board participating and we're still doing our brick fundraiser and I was hoping that we could use some funds to purchase a Swanton school board brick.
That'd be nice.
For sure.
I think so, too. I'd be happy to donate to that.
See, I was thinking donate as well, I'm not sure who, it may have been Laura, or Justina mentioned that we have, we have a budget as well as the board that could be used.
That wasn't me, but yes, it do.
Okay, so I'm fine either way. I know that board members have donated.
They've all individually done it, so maybe we should just do one with the board money since we're...
I mean, I think we've all contributed.
Yeah, it makes sense to me.
So if we have a, do we have a miscellaneous fund?
Yeah.
You have, not a miscellaneous.
Your board's budget.
Yeah, you have a board budget.
For $100.
I think there might be some supplies in there.
Last year, we didn't use like any of it.
There's 250 in supplies, there's...
Yeah, we've got the excess this year, so...
I think we should buy a bigger brick.
Or multiple.
We want a big brick, I like to think of, Dawn.
The thing is, if you walk around this school and other schools, many times when The thing is, if you walk around this school and other schools, many times when something big is done, there's like a plaque or another, it'd be interesting. I know one place where I donated a fair sum of money. You get a fairly good size brick, like size about three of them, and they put the names of the people who were like school directors at that time.
I know, right now, I'll have to check with Debbie. I'm not sure if we have other sizes available through the company that we're working with, but I can ask her.
Might open up a whole big can of worms. People might...
Hey, people want big ones, we can get a big one.
I want a big one. Biggest one in the...
Well, I'm sure it'd probably be a couple hundred dollars if you got one where you could put the last school board here gave the money for the playground.
That is true. It's kind of a sad...
Oh, that's true.
Not necessarily. We'll see.
Can I add one more number if you're okay?
Okay, yep, yep.
This is what happens when you don't write it down. This was my first thing. We really, we have been recycling kind of all along, and we're tightening up, but we started composting this year because we had to. And Eric Austin, one of our custodial staff, has taken it on himself and created bins, all of this. We've done mostly all lunchroom. We're starting in classrooms right after April break.
Wow.
Thinking that it would give teachers a chance to practice that at the end of the year versus starting another new thing at the beginning. We'll get some systems going. But as of today, from the beginning of the year, actually, we started a little bit late with kindergarten too, so it's not, everybody's been doing it, but now that we're there, we have collected 14,880 pounds of compost material.
Wow.
Which I think is pretty good, you know, for just the beginning. So with Eric's leadership, you know, we're gonna, we're trying to get kids involved to be a part of it, to help with that more next year as it goes kind of into holdback.
That's awesome.
Does he have a farm?
He, yeah, and that's the thing, he's been taking a lot of the stuff that he can so that there's no cost in having to send it out if we keep... And I don't think we're gonna end up doing a lot more, you know, it's both lunchrooms and so forth. It's the kid stuff, plus it's the leftovers from the aviary, the composting from them, so. So it's been working out well. It's always hard because you have to take time, you have to educate the kids. Justina's been great with the kindergarten kids. She's like doing one class a week because, you know, as they start, it's like even carrying their chair. That's why we waited so long to start with the looking under kids. So it's just we're very thankful for the leadership. That's really about it right now.
That's great, Justina, thank you. Okay, and now, I'm sorry you're sick, and we're asking you, Julie, superintendent's report.
I'm wondering if I might just go into the Act 46 stuff.
Yes, you know, I feel bad to even ask you to do anything.
No, it's quite all right. Even as complicated as Act 46, I can just sort of do it without having to...
You've been living it nonstop.
We have been living it a bit. So a number of things. I think first up, I want to make sure folks know about the organizational meeting tomorrow being a very important meeting. We expect that the meeting will be opened and that all of our business will be conducted. We are not expecting that anyone would delay or seek to do anything like that again since the injunction was denied by Judge Mella last month, or earlier this month. So we will be voting, the moderator, clerk, and treasurer for the district will be voting on whether we make decisions regarding budget, other questions, and board members by Australian ballot or in a town meeting. We'll be voting on when we vote. My personal hope is that we choose town meeting day because we have to choose that first, and then we choose how we vote. So if we choose a different date, then that makes it more difficult to, it's almost predetermined one way or another. And if we choose town meeting day, we could either hold a town meeting style in the afternoon or evening, or we could do Australian ballot. We could do both things. So I'm going to make a little pitch for that. We will also be voting on being able to suspend the new district to spend money and to... And those are all very important issues, and so I hope to see everybody there. And I think there's gonna be a good turnout. I just don't want more advertising.
I sure hope so.
It's an important issue.
Is there gonna be babysitting again?
There should be again. There was maybe just one, one family last time, so.
Oh, wow, okay.
But the National Honor Society is gonna be doing it.
Do it again?
Yep.
And you'll start off the meeting?
Tim will because he was elected as temporary presiding officer, so he'll be able to open the meeting.
Okay.
And we can get right to the article electing the clerk. Now, we will have town clerks there, and they can swear you all in so that you can, the temporary officers can be sworn in. We expect, I'll go into it more in a minute, but we expect the first meeting of the temporary board to be Monday, the 25th.
So a question on that, since John is not here, and he won't, I don't believe he'll be back in time for that. But he's the clerk, so it's Terry and John from this book.
Right.
So...
That was always voted in January.
No, so he wouldn't be able to participate.
I thought we voted on Terry and Don.
Oh, that's right, because Terry wasn't gonna be there. We made him, we voted.
We did?
He said he wouldn't be here.
Who, John?
John.
Yeah, it's Terry, it's you and I.
Yes, because he maybe wouldn't be here.
Okay.
Who did you think it was making?
John, because it was the, it's the chair and the clerk.
He indicated he'd be on a sailboat.
Right.
That's right, and that's where he is, so.
And that is where he is. Okay, all right.
I'm sure you thought it should be earlier.
Yeah, I know. We thought everything would be earlier. But now, his timing backed up, which is kind of interesting.
Right, he wasn't on the boat when we thought it was gonna happen.
Right.
Okay, just making sure.
So, yes.
Excellent.
So Don and Terry can get sworn in either at the meeting, or you could stop into the town clerk. But they're gonna come with those.
If they're gonna be there. So if we, just a question, if we meet, will we probably meet at night? Like at seven or something, the way we typically do, or six or something?
Yes.
Okay, beautiful.
So the reason why we need to do that is we received a memo from the Agency of Ed on March 8th that was reported in the Messinger and other news outlets, where the school districts such as ours that tried to hold an organizational meeting and was unsuccessful in completing it, they were very clear that we need to move forward, that the law is currently in place, and though legislation is being discussed and voted upon, it is not in place yet. And they made it very clear that districts that are engaging in civil disobedience, I believe, was a phrase that was thrown around at some point, that there would be consequences, and that the state would use all of the legal action that it has. And they did point, I asked, "Such as what?" Just out of curiosity. And they pointed to Title 16163, I think it was, where they talk about taking over the schools, taking over the finances, replacing the offices of the board, replacing superintendents, doing all kinds of things that don't sound good at all.
Wow.
So they're quite serious, and it is what it is. So...
And also 85%...
It's like the custody thing.
Oh, sorry, wait, tell...
Remember at the Articles of Agreement Amendment Committee, and talking about the divorce as well, even if you're fighting for the kids, you still stick with what the judge says until the judge says it's announced.
Yeah, that was a good metaphor.
It's like this one. It's coming back. It's sticking in.
So they also are threatening 85% of your past budget, right?
Well, we don't, no, that was actually...
No, that was something different?
That was a positive.
A what?
There is no law in place for school districts in our situation should we not pass a budget.
Right.
Because we have no prior year's budget to fall back on. So the Senate bill right now does have provision in it to give us a default budget, which is the part of the bill I like. I don't particularly like the other part of the bill, and I can tell you why later, but it's just my opinion. But they are trying to advocate for there to be a process for us should we not... Because frankly, if folks are unhappy with the change, one way they can express it is, well, we know, I would certainly hope that that would be the case in our community because our communities care about their students and support the schools.
But it's new.
And, you know, whether it's...
And people are angry.
And people are unhappy, but...
Or don't understand when they see this huge budget.
If we don't have a budget by June 30th, then we...
Wow, which isn't a lot of time.
It would be very difficult. So with that memo came a timeline, and each district in our situation had their own specific timeline. And ours, because of when we postponed our organizational meeting to, based on that. So petitions in by the 25th for the new board, not the temporary transition board, but the initial new board of the district. Now, we've had a lot of questions about whether we should have three petitions or two petitions, and we'll get to that later. A lot of that depends on what the decision of the transition board is.
Yes.
But we have that initial meeting of the transition board. They warn the election for the new board, possibly of the Articles of Agreement. I would expect, we look at both of those things at the same time. And then that election, I think, was April 30th. The initial board meets the next day. The first thing they do is warn the budget.
Budget, yeah.
And that would be June 4th. Now, excuse me, the Senate bill that's going on right now, that's calling for the initial board at its first meeting to vote on whether there would be a delay or not.
Oh, the real board, the...
The real board, not the transition board, but the initial elected board of the district.
The initial board versus transition.
What I don't like about that is it politicizes that first board.
Oh, big time.
And instead of the legislature making the decision about a delay, puts it back onto communities, and then...
You're right.
I just don't think that's, I think that's pretty loaded.
It does put it up the center of the...
It's not going to set a good tone for a new board in communities like ours where it's been really divisive.
And where some boards want to say, "Go ahead, let's just do this because we're gonna end up doing it." And others say, "No, we have to wait."
Right, and it's just kicking the can down the road here.
And what I sent an email to the Agency of Ed today, because what about Sheldon? Because I can very much foresee that the Mississauga district, I think it might be very close as to whether you choose to delay or not.
I think you're right.
I think it would be very close. And so say we choose not to delay, and we choose to move ahead, and then the Northern Valley Mountains School District with Montgomery and Sheldon, they decide to delay. Well, where'd Sheldon go? Where'd they go?
Oh, I never, I didn't even think of that.
I don't think anyone did.
Yeah.
So I submitted that question. Somebody maybe bring that up in front of the Senate before they finalize it.
Yeah, that's good.
I emailed our senators, but I did not, I'm gonna send them another one.
I think that would be good. I've been trying not to do that because we have boards on both sides of the issue. But I think it's a very important point to bring up. I'm concerned about where that would push it. At any rate, so we will either be voting on a budget May 1st for June 4th, vote on the budget, the merged budget, or we'd be voting to delay. So a lot to know.
So June 4th would be...
The first time, the first...
The budget vote.
The budget vote.
And that's because of the timeline.
That is because of the warnings.
So the new board, we don't see a transition board.
Right, it's not. That's why.
Yeah, the transition on the 25th.
The transition board is going to take a lot of work, I'm sure, though.
Yes, so they warn it, but then they start working on the budget in the next 30 days.
Oh, okay.
Well, they're voting, voting the election.
So April 25th could be a vote on the budget.
The April 25th will be the vote on the new board, the initial board.
March 25th, Monday. I'm sorry, I'm confused.
I was thinking that they'll warn, if we meet on March 25th, the transition board, we will warn for the initial board elections.
It says April 30th on...
It'd be April 30th.
Okay, which would be April 30th, okay.
And hopefully...
Is that ours? Yes.
Now, we've gone around about whether to have the three petitions or two petitions. And it's difficult because we don't have... If we were 100% sure that the transition board would say, "Yes, we're gonna vote on Articles of Agreement at the same time," then I would say we should fill out three petitions. And we still can do that if you like. But it would be difficult to figure out which two petitions were binding and which... Because typically what happens in a voluntary merger, you go to the electorate with Articles of Agreement and then a slate of board members.
Right. I'm worried about our Articles of Agreement being delayed because we happened, we almost had it, and then it was delayed. Right? I mean, weren't there some that we couldn't agree on?
I think, well, you're finished.
I wasn't present. They voted to agree on it.
We finished.
You finished.
They're finished, but they were accepted. It's not fit.
Well, the transition board can do anything it likes.
Right.
And at this point, what the decisions were to wait on a couple in case the judge rules completely in support of not transferring debt or something like that. But that hasn't happened yet, but it'll be up on Monday. We'll see what people's thoughts are. I think they may be ready to move forward with the Articles of Agreement. I'm not sure.
Oh, the transitional, got it.
That is true. We might come to think about it.
We might be ready to bring them to a vote, and I think they should, but that's just my opinion.
I think so too.
You say that again, I did catch all of that.
So I think the transition board, they're the ones that take the Articles of Agreement and decide whether they take them as recommended, change them, or throw them away, right? So they're the ones that will decide whether they want to bring them to the voters or not. I think that people are ready, what I'm hearing.
Is that, I guess why I'm asking, was that a six member or the nine?
That's the nine.
Nine.
That's the nine number.
Yes. If we didn't have to have the petition decision at the same time that we have to warn the Articles, we would have time to get third petitions. I think we can simply elect six board members and then point three.
I think that's brilliant, personally. I think that way, otherwise...
It's too confusing, otherwise...
This whole thing has been confusing, if anything, to everyone.
If we can take one thing away, I'm for it.
So that's the plan as of now.
And it's only for a short time. Like you could do the one year with the...
With the appointed one, right.
Right.
Absolutely.
So we keep the one year in the bay? Well, we didn't, we don't have one. Yeah, we do have, we have one.
We have a three year and a two year as it stands. And then if we move to the nine-member board, we would, Swanton would get one, one year.
Yes.
Because the other towns have, we're all staggered.
We're all staggered. So that's, that's the update. I don't think, am I missing anything?
Justina, what's that? Can I talk budget for a second? Because of all this, the budget vote is tentatively June?
June 4th.
June 4th. It was brought up at that last meeting at MBU that people didn't really understand the impacts of budgets if we waited. We brought up, it might have been you, Julie, who talked about hiring, which is going to be greatly impactful.
Yes.
Fearful of losing teachers because we can't offer those contracts. The biggest thing that Jason helped me realize yesterday is all of the summer projects that this board has approved, we will not be able to do because we don't have a budget. And that's a hard core fact that really, I was worried more about staffing.
Right.
But at this point, if you remember, I tried to get up to date on things we, you had approved as we built our Swanton budget, continuing the work on the asbestos, which has been, I believe, now five years.
Five years.
We've been, four or five years we've been able to continue that. We started all of the refurbishing of the red house. That was going to continue. The big item we were excited about was using approximately $29,000 from the...
Capital Reserve.
Capital Reserve Fund, which would have helped to bring that down. And then with the additional $20, $20,000 in the budget, we would have been able to do the Babcock lighting project. Right now, with no budget and no indication of whether or not it will pass in June, Jason usually, after town meeting day or the night of, I send him an email and I say, "Start lining up your people." There's no way we can do that now, and by June, if it were to pass, hopefully in June, it would still be too late. And if it doesn't pass, then that's a whole other thing. So it really saddened me at that meeting that people thought that waiting wasn't going to impact the running of our school.
So if it was, if we approved it with this, our current budget, we, why can we not do it?
Yeah, that's, I don't understand either.
But that budget, to my understanding, hasn't been voted on. I mean, by you it has, but it...
Well, we don't have a budget voted on by the electorate.
I thought we were usually voting on the project board bill.
That's right, from this budget.
It's not. All of those plans, I'm sorry, we...
Oh.
The work that was done last summer was here. When we were building a budget and we presented part of our five-year plan, that was next year. You had already approved last year. We did all of the work last summer on this year's budgeted funds.
Got it.
After July 1. And I don't think there's any other way we could have done it.
Because I think it's important to stand up and say that, hopefully tomorrow.
Yeah, I agree.
If there's time to have more discussion.
Is there any reason, Megan, I guess, to do it now?
I just, I fear somebody will try to postpone.
Well, you know what?
And I want to be able to say, "No, this is why."
The more important discussion would be when we have the transition board and when we're having that board discuss, you know, whether to move forward or whether to delay.
We must have some carryover. Do we have some carryover?
I'm projecting one right now. But unless those funds get expended before or very close to June 30, you know, a little shortly thereafter.
So we could look at that. I personally, I mean, as far as being fiscally responsible to spend that money or to even earmark it now, while I so appreciate that, there could be a major, a major maintenance thing that we can plan. It could be some students moving in. It could be some students moving into alternative settings. It's only March, so... And I'm not sure, as Laura's figuring out the projected carryover. We also, the board graciously said, "Go ahead and order our FMP kit." So we've really been diligent on how we were spending, especially in light of moving forward.
See, I was thinking that if we're going to vote on the budget early May, if we're gonna go around in June, we need to know by early May what that budget's gonna be, right?
Well, the merged budget would be adopted May 1st.
So by that time, I think, I was thinking, that's about six weeks out, we could have another board meeting and probably follow on our schedule. At that time, if Jason had prioritized, and Laura would have some idea what we had for carryover, I think as a board we could prioritize. I don't think we can lose a year, to be honest with you.
I agree with we're done on this. I think that we have to get creative.
Six weeks out, we'll have a pretty good idea if somebody's moving in or out, or if we're gonna have some major catastrophe.
Yeah, I would hate to see.
And then, and we would know what the transition board...
I would just worry about the timeline if I can issue, I can't hold checks for 60 days. I can hold checks for a little while, but I can't keep the books open that long.
If Jason could tell asbestos to wait.
Right, so I mean, we, you know, a few weeks is okay, you know, we can cut checks before June 30 and hold on to them for vendors, but when you really don't know how much you're gonna spend and...
And Jason was very respectful of, I mean, if he, let's say, the asbestos people. I mean, he has a really tight timeline where they come in right after school gets done, but if he were to call tomorrow and say, "This is our plan, but we're not sure yet," and whether or not they would commit to us, because that's two, three weeks of work they might... That was, that was his thought, Don. I like, I like the idea, and that's why I brought it here.
I mean, you can, you can do that for next year's funds. You just write in the contract and in the RFP that it's contingent upon either your budget passage or...
With them.
Or what's left.
Right. But that does, whether or not they do it is up to them.
Yeah.
My, his point was, if we're not doing it, then they've lost out on work, but you're saying we...
I don't know if it's completely atypical to have that happen.
Do we know how much the asbestos removal project is, when they...
I didn't bring Jason's list with me. He handed it out.
I think we have, we have that information.
And we can do that. So you're saying, I mean... And we can do that, so you're, I mean, we could problem solve around that. It's just that, he's, he's really nervous right now because he doesn't know. So even right now, Dawn, the only thing, and perhaps I should have been more prepared tonight and brought him here, because he would have to, I mean, he could contact at least one piece of this.
Right.
And we talked about using the Capital Reserve $29,000 to maybe do a portion of Red House. So those are different things we've already start, started trying to problem solve, but just the fact, the lighting project is very disappointing because that's something we've, that has been on our list and we thought we were really close.
Well, and that was what the, what the Capital Reserve was supposed to be spent on, was purchasing the supplies now before June 30 for the lighting project. So I don't, you wouldn't want to do that if you're not gonna do the other, I mean, well, I wouldn't think anyway.
The other portion, but I think maybe in Dawn's idea, if there were up to $20,000 in this year's carryover, that could secure that project, I think, is that true?
And I think there will be, I mean, I, I, I'm with Dawn on this 100%. I think Megan, you're too.
I know, we're sitting here in the middle of March and I should be carrying. I still come back to, I think everybody should, I think everybody should prepare when I have a budget. And then the board should meet once that transition budget or where our transition board gets a budget and sit down with the board, see how hard the numbers are, have Jason here, and then take a chance.
So when you say prepare a budget, you mean a budget for the projects?
Yeah, I agree with you, Dawn.
Well, this, if this happens on tomorrow night, will this board meet again?
Oh, yes, till the end of the year.
We're allowed to.
You're allowed to.
We only have two more meetings scheduled though.
But we can always add two if we need to, you know?
So what I, what I could do, if this is okay with the board, I will go back to Jason tomorrow and I'm gonna have him do several different scenarios.
Good.
In a perfect world, the budgets for the project that the board had approved that we had presented, 100%, even maybe touch base with those people. Then a Plan A, a Plan B, I do like the idea of at least going for the lighting project because we know probably $20,000 would, would be doable. So I think I might even give him the okay to move forward on timing with that if the board approves that. Because we do have that $29,000 in that. So then looking at the total cost for the asbestos and, and the Red House. The thing with the Red House is we kind of hate it to say, well, we could do one room. Doing like the three or four makes a big difference because we closed down that house. You got it, you take it out, all the painting's already been done, so. Okay, thank you for that guidance because as I met with Julie, it was just kind of just.
It was such an obvious meeting.
Yeah.
So Laura, thank you for that.
You know, going back to what Laura said, you know, if we say to a vendor that, you know, we're in a very unusual situation and that you're going to, you're gonna get this job, you keep it open, and you make sure certainly that you have to get things backed up by June 3 or the week after, then we'll be all right, but we don't want vendors thinking they're gonna finish in June, late July or August because that's not gonna happen. What I'm saying.
I know, I know what you're saying.
Tell the vendors, look, get in here, get to work, or we aren't gonna do the job this year. If they really want to work, then they'll get in.
Then they'll get paid eventually, it just might not be this.
But what we're saying.
If you're, if your intention is to try to spend this year's money if it's available, I'm just saying, there is also the option of going out to bid and saying, this is contingent upon a budget happening.
Right.
And that, that's pretty typical, that, that's not an odd thing, that happens.
And the only thing with pushing to the end of the year is, like, the fiscal year, they have to close their books. And we get out of school on June 14th. And these buildings are not gonna be empty from staff until around June 19th. So we're really.
Is that because of staff meeting?
We have days to make up in our contract, students are done the 14th. And we are here for three additional days due to contracting snow days.
We're selling the multi-abbey.
That would give us an extra week, or if you excuse the contract, that's up to you.
Is there an RFP for it, or is it the same company that we've used for the other rooms?
For what, the?
For the abatement.
Same company, so.
So, I mean, we also have that relationship in place too.
They are good people, they aren't gonna lose this job.
Right.
You know, the rule of asbestos was a big thing a decade ago. It's not as, there aren't as many jobs out there as there were.
That's a good point.
Okay, I could just keep you abreast of that, but thank you.
Megan's right, good vendors that you've worked with will work with.
Yeah.
Good, thank you. All right, so it looks like we've done the superintendent's and we've done old business with Act 46. So we're now on new business.
That's me.
Bet you will be.
Yeah.
Are you hanging in there okay?
I am.
Okay.
You want some water?
I've got a cough drop, okay, great. We had Laura, well, please chime in. We had a meeting with the folks for the stormwater grant project. We had the regional planning board reps. We had people from environmental, Department of Environmental Conservation, I think, DEC. And then we had the engineers, the water engineers.
The water engineers.
I think they're civil engineers, I don't know. Is it crops?
No.
No, this is, they're hired by the state.
And they do stormwater runoff engineering of the project. This grant is 100% funded and will result in a 30% design. So the board will see three different options of design to handle the runoff.
It's a different parking lot move.
And the whole.
They talked about everything, they look at everything.
They look at everything. Because Swanton has, I think, six acres of impermeable surface, they will be subject to a stormwater permit in 2020. And there is a real drive for grant funding to be prioritized to schools so that we do not have to spend any money on compliance with this permitting process.
Yeah.
So you will be able to see, they're aware of the playground project. It was funny, even when they're looking at maps of Swanton, they're like, well, who owns this property? It's like, focus. They're really looking at the whole region. And Franklin County and Mississauga Bay is a priority for the state for stormwater. So it really was, they were focused on the central office building and the fact that that was in Marbury.
I brought that up, I'm sorry. Good enough.
I'm like, we don't own this building, please do not attack to us about it. But it looks like it will be a good process. I believe it was over the April break that they will begin soil sampling and then they'll go on from there. Now, because the state took so long to sign off on the contracts, everything was delayed.
That's shocking.
I know.
They're also delayed in writing the rules for the new water standards, so.
Right, that too is shocking. So it will, it will, it will straddle years. Initially, it was going to all be done this school year. But once we get the 30% design and the board just decides which way to go, and I kept having to say, no, a board will decide which way to go. And they will be happy to come and present to the board.
That's awesome.
What the results are and what the options are. Then we would immediately apply for another grant to fund the work itself. So I was, I was pleasantly surprised at the level of fiscal commitment to the work. So, and they were very cooperative, understanding the playground project and if they could do things at the same time as the playground project. But I don't think they'll be able to, they'll just have to work around it.
But they're aware of that, if they have the plans and all of that, so it's.
That's awesome.
So that's the update for now.
Okay, thank you. And possible land purchases, is that executive or is that open?
You can talk big picture. Yeah, it is more, right now, just big picture.
Big picture.
And it's not even, I, I think we use that title because we're kind of going back to earlier conversations. I think in the middle of like all this merger or not, revisiting and having a conversation, whether it's tonight or in the near future, about parking here. And that is really kind of where the land purchase started originally. And it's never necessarily something that you always want to use school budget money for to do that because there's so many things within the building educationally. That's just my epiphany, maybe ignore things differently too, but looking at it that way. It's just, as we continue to grow, it's really getting tight around here. Parents, on many occasions are not happy with our system for pickup and coming in and out. For a lot of years, I stood outside and I tried to help direct that traffic. It's a very hard job to do. Safety is a big thing. I think the day that it was really, really hard was when we had our concert in February with all that snow out there. We were inviting first and second grade parents to a daytime concert that we knew we had no parking for. When you put all staff in here, there's about 150 cars here already. We did use the parking lot next door overflow, that was great to be able to use that. But cars were parked up and down the street, which we know does happen, but it was still really icy. So I just was thankful that nothing happened. But if we're going to invite our community in and we don't have places to park, nighttime's better because the 150 staff cars are gone. So it's just, it's, it's bigger and I think it's, as we've grown, it's just, I think when the school was first built, you know, we didn't have as big a staff. But I think it's something that we need to really start looking at seriously, whether it's, it's land or whatever. And I guess with me, it's the whole timeline of if the Swanton board is not existing anymore, you know, it's almost like hindsight 2020, should we have looked at, should we have looked at it more? But, so it's more just a concern, Julie and I briefly talked about it. And I guess at the direction of the board to start exploring other options that we might be able to.
We did talk at one time about pursuing a ton of garages.
Yes.
And still pursue them.
It is, and I think the biggest thing, and that was, and I don't want to rehash it all now, especially with you not feeling well, but that was when winter was here. Apparently there was a lot of, people looked into it. There was some issues, some reasons why not. The board decided not to move forward on it, but it is still there. Graciously, they do let us use it on concert dates, which is really nice. I think we just need to start looking at other options.
An executive session on that land's purchase, I do want to talk about a land purchase that we explored one time, the Dible Thruin where that may be. They've got four in a time with that.
So it's just, you know, so that's really what, what that is about, but it's.
And I, I would say, just from what I've seen with the merger, if it goes forward and all, that I could see that still being on the radar of the board. I mean, I, yeah, I could never see that going off because just like the, the status of the way Highgate is, that school is gonna have to stay on the radar.
Right.
And I think, just it's uncharted territory as far as how those priorities will be set as we move forward. So I just, I just think it's, it's really time that we, we start problem solving with that. I don't think it will impact, you know, with the playground moving forward, that's great because we would never use any of that for parking or anything of those sorts, so.
Beautiful.
There's just more of an FYI.
Thank you, thank you everybody for coming when people don't feel that good too. So before we move to executive session, first of all, who would we like to invite to executive session? Just so we know who gets to stay and who needs to leave.
I don't think we need Laura to stay.
Okay. We don't need Tamra, you get to, but before we talk about splitting for, splitting? Leaving for executive session, is there anything else anyone wants to bring up? Before we adjourn, other than the meeting, well, we don't have our meeting dates, other than tomorrow night is a huge one. And then the FN.
Let me just ask the question. Terry and I were, I'm sensing that we are supporting going to a nine-member board?
I think that's something we're gonna have to talk about.
If that's something we have to talk about here.
On the agreement.
Finished meeting in January, got my petition for three-year term. I think I emailed everybody one afternoon.
Good for you.
And then said, and then Secretary of State told me Monday it's, it holds up because we want to first down in that situation. So when I asked questions, I said, oh, this is an easy one because we've done this a number of times, and the Tampa is, the only thing, they changed it from January to March, so we'll see.
Perfect.
But, yeah, I'd like to have a discussion whether we want to support the three so that we don't get in the same situation.
Beautiful. Okay, so should we?
We should have a finding that we need to discuss particularly the issuing of contracts because prior knowledge, premature public knowledge could put one party under substantial disavantage.
Thank you, Julie, you said that even when I'm feeling good and I couldn't get it together, thank you. All right, so we have a finding? Do we need to take a motion to do it, or are we just doing it? I'm so sorry, I forgot everything while I was on vacation.
That's what you're supposed to do, Terry.
I'm like, who?
Yes, you need a worship.
You look fantastic, by the way.
Thank you, thank you. I'm so relaxed. Okay, who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion later.
We can take that. And we need a second, but we don't need discussion.
We'll check it, but.
Great, all right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everyone.